Good morning, Temecula. We are going to call today's Temecula City Council Budget Workshop to order this morning. It is 9:00 a.m. If you would all please join me in the flag salute, I would appreciate it. You place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. All right, we may have the roll call, please. Deputy City Clerk.
Yes. Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Kelfis.
Here.
Mayor Schwank.
I'm here.
And Mayor Protem Stewart.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move through the agenda. We have public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll move into the joint meeting of the City Council, Temecula Community Services District, and Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. We have one item today in our business is review fiscal years 2024 through '28 Capital Improvement Program and review fiscal year 2023 through '24 Capital Improvement Program and annual operating budgets for the City of Temecula, the Temecula Community Services District, and the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I have long held that one of the hallmarks of our great city has been the management of our finances, which I will call fiscal stewardship. For over thirty years, City Councils and City staff have collectively made very solid financial decisions, wise investments in needed capital projects, investments in our workforce, and even investments in revenue generating projects or projects that would ultimately save us money. Just because we are a government agency, we can still maintain a great deal of thoughtfulness, many times with the return on our investment mindset. I believe we have proven that we can be strategic while fulfilling our public obligations. This year is no different. I am pleased to share again this year that the city's operating budget is balanced, the community services budget is balanced, the capital improvement program remains robust and well-funded. As shared in February, when we provided the mid-year financial update through intentional strategic efforts on the part of the City Council, the city fared better than anticipated through the pandemic years. And although our local economy has rebounded, I would still characterize recent signs as more of a softening of our economy going forward, and our fiscal planning reflects this. We are not ready to declare a recession, but many indicators tell us we are approaching a leveling off of revenue, and that was our fiscally conservative approach when building these extensive budget documents for your consideration. Today, our executive staff, representing the exceptional efforts of their respective departments, will walk you through the budget process and provide the highlights of the annual operating and capital improvement program budgets. Director of Finance Jennifer Hennessy will summarize the proposed operating budgets for the General Fund and Measure S Fund, which will be discussed later in the presentation about reporting and how we message Measure S as a general fund revenue. Captain Chris Durham will present the Sheriff's Budget and highlight the department's special teams. Fire Chief John Crater will present the Fire Department Budget. Director of Community Services Erica Russo will discuss the TCSD budget highlights, programs, and events. Director of Public Works Pat Thomas will discuss the capital improvement program budget. Deputy City Manager Luke Watson will provide an update on the city's affordable housing projects. And finally, we will close with topics we've identified as future planning items to delve into further over the next few months. As with previous budget presentations, we would like the opportunity and suggest that we run through the entire program and slides in their entirety, and then pause on the backend for discussion and questions and answers. We believe many of the questions may be answered or clarified when the whole budget picture is explained surrounding the annual operating budget, the capital improvement program, TCSD, and the five-year forecast. As you will see throughout today's presentation, the city's financial position remains healthy with all funds balanced and all reserves fully funded. The budget process begins each year in January with the review of the current year's budget and the development of revenue projections and the preliminary five-year forecast, which serves as the baseline budget for the ensuing fiscal year. In early February, staff presented the budget priorities and key fiscal policies to the City Council for discussion and potential changes for the upcoming budget. Council's confirmation of the priorities served as the foundation upon which staff developed the proposed budget. Additionally, staff held budget engagement sessions with each of the city's four commissions during February and March to obtain feedback on community priorities. The commission members' feedback has been incorporated into the budget recommendations, and we have a separate slide coming up that summarizes their feedback. During the month of April, departments present their requests via several internal review meetings, which culminate in the development of the proposed budget and capital improvement program being presented today. Any changes to the proposed budget and CIP that come from our discussions today will be incorporated into the final operating and capital budgets that will be presented to the City Council at the June 13th meeting. From the budget engagement sessions with the city commissions, several themes emerged from the discussions, including: The commission members overwhelmingly agree that the city's investment in resources are indeed in line with the community's priorities. Public safety should remain the city's top priority. A continued investment to address traffic congestion and affordable housing options is highly valued. And having ongoing community engagement is vital for the city and should continue into the future. You will see that we've taken these comments to heart and have incorporated them throughout the budget and the CIP. From the top-rated ISO II Fire Department from Chief John Crater to the proactive approach to policing that you will hear from Captain Chris Durham to the wide-ranging investments in infrastructure projects that Pat Thomas will share when presenting the CIP, the city remains safety-focused and centered on providing a high quality of life to its residents. Strategic planning is foundational in the city's planning efforts to ensure that the priorities of the council and the community remain at the forefront and are reflected in the city's operating budget and capital improvement program. Projects and programs proposed in the budget and CIP must be consistent with the city's core values identified in the Quality of Life Master Plan, or the QLMP. Performance indicators are measured annually to track progress and the completion of goals and objectives. On November 15, 2022, the City Council adopted the Quality of Life Master Plan, which serves as a community-centric planning document of priorities and values for the next twenty years. The QLMP identifies the city's seven core values, including: A healthy and livable city; Economic prosperity; A safe and prepared community; Sustainable and resilient city; Transportation, mobility, and connectivity; Accountable and responsive city government; and the newest additional core value of equity. The Long-Ranging Planning Division has developed a four-phase, multi-year process to update the general plan. Phase one is complete and includes updates to the housing and public safety elements. Phase two is in process and includes the updated QLMP and analysis of the city's climate action plan and the development of a complete streets policy document. Phase three will include a fiscal land use study to analyze the city's remaining development capacity and market absorption, potential for residential, commercial, and industrial development, and we expect this to be completed in the fall of 2023. The final phase is to work with a general plan advisory committee to update the general plan and the environmental impact report over an eighteen-month timeframe. In December 2022, the City Council approved a multi-year strategy to pay down the city's debt and unfunded liabilities. To date, both the Civic Center and the Margarita Recreation Center, their loans have been paid in full, creating an annual savings of $2.2 million. Additionally, the city paid $7.25 million towards the CalPERS unfunded pension liability, creating an ongoing annual savings of $900,000 per year. Additionally, excuse me, as shown in the chart, this next fiscal year, we plan to pay off the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, unfunded liability, which relates to the retiree health benefit afforded to employees who joined the city prior to 2005. Another $10.5 million will go towards the pension liability, creating cumulative annual savings of $4.6 million. I'm pleased to share that we are still in position to meet our goal of being completely debt-free as a city in seven years, saving the city nearly $34 million in interest payments. Director of Finance Jennifer Hennessy will now review the fiscal impacts of the proposed General Fund and Measure S budgets.
All right, thanks, Erin. Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. The General Fund serves as the city's primary operating fund and provides the funding required to deliver public safety, public works, community development, and administrative services to the city of Temecula. General Fund revenue is projected to reach $112 million, with sales tax contributing 44% of total revenue. Expenditures are projected to be $95.8 million next fiscal year. And contributions to other funds include $766,000 transferred to the Capital Improvement Program for the General Plan Update and the I-15 Congestion Relief Project. The General Fund will contribute $1.5 million into the Fire Facility Acquisition Fund to build up a reserve for the future acquisition of Fire Station Number 12 in Old Town, bringing the fund balance to $4.5 million. And as part of the debt liability paydown strategy Erin mentioned previously, $15.9 million in available General Fund balance will go towards the OPEB and pension unfunded liabilities to generate cumulative ongoing savings of $4.6 million. General Fund revenues projected to remain flat compared to the prior year, with revenue totaling $112.3 million. Sales tax, property tax, and Measure S are forecasted in conjunction with the city's consultant HDL Companies, whose team is dedicated to analyzing transaction-level detail and statewide economic trends. While a recession is not yet forecasted by HDL, a flattening of the economy is, and sales tax revenues reflect this forecast. Property tax and property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee revenues are based on home valuations from the prior year and reflect inflationary growth of 4.7% and 5.3% respectively. Franchise fees reflect the increase in utility rates, primarily for electric and gas services. And TOT, which is transient occupancy tax, is projected to be flat compared to the prior year. While current or while occupancy rates have increased, the average daily rate charged by hotels has decreased. Measure C is the parcel tax approved in 1997 at $74.44 per home per year. This revenue is allocated 50% to the parks' maintenance and 50% to TCSD operations. Licenses and permits revenue come from the various building permits, plan check fees, and other development-related revenue, and is projected to increase by 2%. Measure S revenue reflects the funding for eleven sheriff's deputies, staffing for Fire Station 95, future asset replacement, and general support of public safety. And transfers in reflect monies from the gas tax fund, the supplemental law enforcement grant, and $5 million from the city's pension trust that will be used to pay down a portion of the unfunded liability. And reimbursement revenue includes the payment for public services that are levied in various community facilities districts. And finally, the other category shows a large decline due to the receipt of one-time ARPA funding from the federal government in the prior year. And again, the total general revenue, General Fund revenue is projected to be $112.3 million. Total General Fund expenditures are projected to increase by 3.3% to $95.8 million, of which 56% is dedicated to public safety. Public Works makes up 20% of the General Fund and is expected to increase 4.4% due primarily to labor agreement adjustments and the administration of the larger CIP program. City Administration makes up 15% and is expected to increase 10% due mostly to labor agreement adjustments. And Community Development makes up 9% of the General Fund and is expected to increase by 4.9% due to inflation. The non-departmental category includes payments for the annual retiree medical contribution, the PERS replacement benefit, and continuity staffing reserve, all of which are offset by an estimated $900,000 reduction in the city's CalPERS pension cost as a result of the liability paydown of $7.25 million in 2022. I'll now turn the presentation over to Captain Chris Durham, who will present the Sheriff's Department Budget.
Thank you, Jennifer. The Temecula Sheriff's Department Budget of $42 million reflects a 3.9 increase over the prior year. The budget includes an estimated 2.5% increase in the sheriff's contract rate, plus the annual motorcycle replacement program includes two new motorcycles this year and the purchase of a new drone to support law enforcement operations. Staffing levels provided by the contract total 117 sworn deputies and 18 community service officers, exceeding the target ratio, staffing ratio of one sworn deputy per 1,000 residents. The city contracts with Riverside County sheriffs to provide patrol coverage and dedicated sworn positions which serve as a command officers and various special teams, including the recently created Robbery Burglary Suppression Team, which has made a significant impact in reducing crime and increasing safety in our city. This team consists of a sergeant, two investigators, and two deputies with the sole purpose to identify and apprehend suspects committing residential and commercial burglaries and robberies in our city. The metro team that was created last fiscal year to ensure safety in Old Town by providing 20,000 hours of dedicated law enforcement per year is now stationed in the newly expanded and renovated Old Town Temecula Sheriff's Substation. This will decrease the response time and provide more patrol hours in Old Town since metro team members will no longer respond from the Southwest Station at the start of their shifts. The core team will continue to address quality of life concerns by working closely with the city's code enforcement, building and safety, TCSD, information technology, and fire departments, as well as neighborhood watch programs, community education, and more. In addition to these teams, the city also contracts for deputies assigned to the special enforcement teams, school resource deputies, mall deputies, and a traffic team. I'll now turn the presentation over to Fire Chief John Crater to present the fire budget.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning. The Fire Department Budget for next year is projected to be $22.8 million. However, with the structured fire tax credit of $11 million that is deducted by the county, leaving the net cost to the city at $11.8 million. The budget includes staffing levels of four firefighters per engine and ladder truck with a total of 71 fire personnel. This will continue to meet the CalOSHA requirement of two in, two out for firefighter safety during a structure fire and served as pivotal factor in the recent upgrade ISO II rating, which puts the city in the top 7% nationwide for structured fire suppression capabilities. A total of $4.5 million has been set aside for the future acquisition of Fire Station 12 in Old Town. Recent negotiations with the county have led to a cost-sharing agreement for staffing at Station 95, where the county will pay approximately $1 million for four positions at that station. In August of 2022, the state entered a new MOU with CalFire, which provides several salary and benefit adjustments noted in the slide. Additionally, the current work week is proposed to decrease from 72 hours to 66 hours per week. To accommodate this proposed change, which will take effect November of 2024, six new firefighter positions have been added to the General Fund five-year forecast. I'll turn it back over to Jennifer to finish up the General Fund section of the presentation.
Thanks, Chief. In addition to the safety departments, the General Fund also includes the Public Works, Community Development, and Administration Departments, which have a combined budget of $42 million, or 6.3% increase over the prior year, due primarily to labor agreement adjustments and the purchase of capital outlay equipment for the newly added positions and a refresh of the city's website to improve the experience of our visitors utilizing the city's website. Also included in this category are the anticipated savings in the CalPERS employer contribution rate for employee pension costs. The ending fund balance for the General Fund is projected to be $36.8 million next fiscal year. Reserves are fully funded at $24 million, and after deducting for future commitments, the available fund balance is projected to be $11.9 million. This slide illustrates the different components of the $36.8 million fund balance. Per budget policy, 20% of operating expenditures are set aside into the reserve for economic uncertainty, and an additional 5% of operating expenditures are set aside into the secondary reserve. These funds are utilized in the event of a major disaster, significant loss in revenue, or for large unexpected expenditures. Reserves are projected to reach nearly $24 million next year. A portion of the fund balance is assigned or committed to future costs associated with capital projects previously approved in the five-year CIP and the Pachanga-funded deputy as those funds are paid in advance. Unassigned fund balance of $11.9 million is the amount available for future one-time appropriations. The city has a longstanding practice of not only budgeting for the next fiscal year, but for the next five fiscal years. This long-term approach to financial management has served us well as we are able to forecast the long-term fiscal impacts of operational decisions made in the present. This slide illustrates the strong fiscal position of the city's General Fund, which is structurally balanced with revenues exceeding expenditures. Both revenues and expenditures reflect realistic growth projections and include any known and anticipated contractual obligations, as well as the economic slowdown predicted to begin in 2023, as indicated by the flat revenue line on the chart. This slide further illustrates the fiscal health of the General Fund by showing that fund balance remains steady and reserves are meeting the desired levels over the next five years. Measure S is the one-cent transactions and use tax approved by Temecula voters in November of 2016. This revenue source became effective in April of 2017 and has generated nearly $162 million over the past six years. As Erin mentioned in his introduction, Measure S is technically considered a general fund revenue. However, we have accounted for it in a separate fund for maximum transparency. For fiscal year 2324, Measure S revenue is expected to remain flat at $40 million, and total appropriations of $45.7 million are in line with council's policy guidelines prioritizing public safety, asset management, capital projects, and community services. Public safety funding of $9.9 million is recommended to augment the Sheriff and Fire Department operations by providing funding for eleven sheriff's deputies, Fire Station 95 staffing, and the future replacement of the fire ladder truck and inspection vehicles. Asset management funding of $3.66 million includes the deposit of $2 million into the Streets Maintenance Fund and $500,000 into the Technology Replacement Fund to further enhance cybersecurity, and just over $2 million into the Facilities Replacement Fund. Capital project investments totaled just under $16 million from Measure S, with $1.4 million added to the CRC renovation project, $1.3 million for the design of the future Uptown Temecula Sports Park, and an additional $1.1 million added to the pickleball courts project, bringing the total project cost to $3.3 million for this highly-desired amenity. And general and community services funding totals $15.2 million, which is primarily dedicated to TCSD operations and library funding. A five-year forecast is also prepared for the Measure S fund, as shown here. Revenue is projected to be flat over the next few years, then slowly increases as the economy begins to improve. Annual appropriations gradually shift from funding CIP projects towards funding higher levels of public safety and general services over time. The ending fund balance in Measure S each year is at a healthy level and available for any unforeseen one-time projects or programs. As the city rebounded from the pandemic, revenues exceeded expectations while operating expenditures were prudently managed in light of the unforeseen nature of the economy. As such, the available fund balance within the General Fund grew and afforded the city the opportunity to give back to the community and help local businesses and nonprofits rebound from the pandemic. A total of $14,080,000 was appropriated by council to establish the Community Reinvestment Fund and created six funding categories across a broad range of services to support the local community. This slide summarizes the specific programs within each of the six categories, and to date, the city has spent and/or committed $7.3 million, as shown here, and the budget includes the phased spending of the remaining CRP funding over the next two fiscal years. And I'll turn the presentation over to Director of Community Services Erica Russo, who will walk you through the TCSD operations budget.
The mission of TCSD is to improve the quality of life for our residents through a complement of facilities, programs, services, events, and activities, or as we like to say, creating community through people, parks, and programs. TCSD serves the community by providing essential access to programs, events, facilities, and services that support the physical and mental health and well-being of people of all ages. This broad umbrella of community services is Parks and Rec and so much more, including inclusive senior and youth services, workforce and education development, homeless outreach, sports, aquatic, and recreation classes and activities, special events, cultural arts, and community engagement, and our award-winning Parks and Facilities. The city's commitment to a high quality of life will be on full display as we anticipate the grand opening this fall of the newly renovated Margarita Recreational Center located at Mike Nigar Community Park. The center will include a new 25-yard swimming pool, a kitchen, classroom, dance studio, and multipurpose room. We look forward to welcoming you to our new intergenerational facility and providing programs, classes, and services for all ages and abilities. The new Welcome Center, located in the previous Visit Temecula Valley storefront out front, is a one-stop shop for all things community services. Residents can register for classes, purchase the city's emergency preparedness backpacks, and learn all about local businesses. Signature events were busier than ever this past fiscal year. We recently hosted Southern California's premier car show, the Temecula Rod Run, with over 500 classic cars on display with spectators coming from as far away as Paris, France. The holiday season also featured Santa's Electric Light Parade, the Christmas tree lighting at the Duck Pond, and the New Year's Eve grape drop. The community will soon be enjoying the Fourth of July Parade and Extravaganza, Art Fest, Color Run, and the new Temecula History Day. And please join us this Saturday, May 27, at 6:30 p.m. in front of City Hall for our Memorial Day Observance Concert featuring the Temecula Valley Symphony. On a daily basis, perhaps the biggest way we impact the community's well-being is through our vast array of classes, activities, and programs. The Summer Fall 2023 Activities brochure, which features 48 pages of programming for the entire community, is packed with programs to keep our residents busy all summer long. Each year, we offer thousands of individual classes for every interest, including sports, performing and visual arts, crafts and cooking, and our award-winning and nationally-recognized aquatics program, which promotes physical activity and water safety for individuals of all ages and abilities. The tiny harvesting community park room has been extra busy during the closure of the CRC for its renovation, and you will notice that it's included in the CIP for an expansion to accommodate our ever-growing contract class program. One of our most popular destinations is the library, the busiest in Riverside County library system, and this guide highlights two full pages of library programs and activities to promote literacy, academic achievement, and social engagement. Please mark your calendars for the Safer Summer Pool Party on Saturday, May 27, from noon to 2 p.m. at the Community Recreation Center. This will feature water safety booths, in-water demonstrations, and sidewalk CPR. TCSD's cultural arts divisions foster a vibrant and engaged community through the visual and performing arts, historic preservation, cultural enrichment, and community outreach. Visitors to Old Town can learn about Temecula's rich history at the Temecula Valley Museum, enjoy an alfresco art exhibit at art nights, explore other cultures at our Culture Days program at Sam Hicks Monument Park, have fun with scientific discovery at Penny Pickles Children's Museum, and take in live performances at the Theater in the Merc. These many options provide a diversity of artistic expression to add color and texture to our community. To keep our community engaged, the Community Relations Team produces high-quality videos, such as around and about Temecula and park adventures, and entertains our residents with their creative and engaging social media posts and reels. The new Temecula Sunset Market has been created to bring a vibrant, family-friendly evening to Old Town reminiscent of night markets internationally. Beginning July 12, join us every second and fourth Wednesday of the month from 5 to 9 p.m. for live entertainment, a gourmet food court, and some of the finest artisans and craft people selling their handcrafted treasures here. and craft people selling their handcrafted treasures here in Old Town. Our sports division has again had a busy year, full of tournaments, league play, camps, and field rentals. As has become an annual tradition, all available weekend dates have been booked for tournaments at our two premier sports venues, Pat Bird's All Sports Park and our newest sports park, the Sports Ranch at Summers Bend. In total, forty-eight tournament weekends have been reserved for two thousand and twenty-three. We are also excited to announce new leagues for our adult population to participate in, such as the city's popular new kickball and senior softball leagues, in addition to our existing offerings of adult softball and basketball. We are thrilled to once again be hosting the Fifteenth Annual College and Vocational Fair at the Promenade Mall, where students will get an opportunity to speak with representatives from over three hundred California-based and out-of-state colleges, universities, vocational schools, and military institutions. Meanwhile, the Human Services Team is busy preparing for the opening of the new Margarita Rec Center and expanding the summer food service program and other programs for individuals of all abilities and ages. With the addition of CRP funds, the workforce development and human services teams are also working on expanding our successful intern and externship opportunities, including opportunities for young adults with special needs. The city's long-term commitment to mitigating the impacts of homelessness on individuals, businesses, and the community as a whole is known throughout the region as our very successful homeless outreach and prevention program. Through collaborations with partners such as Social Work Action Group, Community Mission of Hope, Riverside Sheriff's Office, Project Touch, and neighboring agencies, city staff in multiple departments have been able to create a framework of support and accountability which has helped thirty-one individuals exit the streets so far this year, totaling an extraordinary two hundred and two street exits since the renewal of the SWAG contract in January of two thousand and twenty-one. This year, the point-in-time count reflected a homeless population of thirty-five unsheltered individuals in Temecula, representing a net reduction of approximately fifty-nine percent in the chronically homeless population in Temecula from its peak in two thousand and seventeen. For the next fiscal year, the TCSD budget reflects revenue totaling eighteen point eight million dollars. Program revenue, which includes the income from contract classes, registration fees, day camp, aquatics, and theater tickets, is projected to be two point six million dollars. Measure C, which is the seventy-four dollar and forty-four cent parcel tax dedicated to park programs and maintenance, is expected to be one point nine million dollars, and the Measure S contribution of fourteen point three million dollars provides the remaining revenue necessary to cover the operations to facilitate TCSD's wide-ranging services and programs. Operating expenditures of nineteen million dollars are increasing by fourteen point four percent, primarily due to the opening of the Margarita Recreation Center and the labor agreement adjustments. As shown in the TCSD five-year forecast, revenue and expenditure levels are anticipated to grow between three to six percent per year as the district continues to enhance its services and programs offered to the public. I will now turn the presentation back over to Jennifer Hennessy to summarize citywide staffing.
Okay, as part of the budget adoption in June, a separate resolution approving the schedule of authorized positions and salary schedule will be included in the operating budget agenda item. The salary schedule reflects the cost-of-living adjustments per the agreement with Teamsters' Local Nine-Eleven, and base salaries for executive, mid-management, confidential, represented, nonrepresented, and project employees will become effective the first pay period in fiscal year two thousand and three, two thousand and four. Since the budget briefings last week, an oversight was discovered, and an additional position is now reflected in the Information Technology Department, bringing the total authorized positions for fiscal year two thousand and three, two thousand and four to a total of one hundred and ninety-nine point two full-time equivalent positions. This includes the five council members and one authorized but unfunded position. A total of three point seven five authorized positions are recommended to be added in fiscal year two thousand and three, two thousand and four, which include the conversion of two existing positions from part-time to full-time, the addition of two Maintenance Worker One positions, one for streets and the other for facilities, and a new Management Analyst position within the Information Technology Department, which will be added in the final budget. To complement the authorized staffing, the city also employs a significant number of part-time project positions in various seasonal and support positions. A total of seventy point three full-time equivalents make up our project staffing positions. And two additional positions are employed, which are limited in term and scope, to support the implementation of the city's new financial system. Staffing for the sheriff and fire departments are provided through contracts with Riverside County and Cal Fire, and sheriff staffing includes one hundred and seventeen sworn deputies and eighteen community service officers, which exceeds the one sworn deputy per one thousand residents goal outlined in the city's general plan and QLMP. Fire department staffing will remain at seventy-one fire personnel and will continue to provide four fire personnel per engine and ladder truck. And this chart shows the city's authorized staffing levels since two thousand and one. And at the peak, the city had two hundred and ten point seven five positions authorized. We remain eleven point five five positions below that peak with one hundred and ninety-nine point two total authorized positions. It's interesting to note that although general fund revenue has grown by seventy-eight percent since two thousand and seven eight from sixty-three million to one hundred and twelve million, through the use of technology and increased efficiencies, the city's authorized headcount remains five and a half percent below two thousand and seven and oh eight. I'll now turn the presentation over to Director of Public Works, Pat Thomas, who will walk you through the Capital Improvement Program budget.
Thank you, Jennifer, and good morning, Mayor and council members. The Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, is a comprehensive five-year plan that addresses the capital needs of the city. Capital projects are those that cost over thirty thousand dollars, have long-term lifespans, and are generally non-recurring. The fiscal years two thousand and twenty-four through twenty-eight is the largest in the city's history, with eight hundred and nineteen million dollars in total costs. The city has identified funding sources totaling six hundred and four million, or seventy-four percent of the total CIP. The remaining two hundred and fifteen million is unspecified at this time; however, before construction on any of these projects begins, a funding source will be identified. Between the current year and next fiscal year, it's anticipated that CIP spending is programmed to exceed two hundred and ninety-one million dollars. The CIP includes a total of one hundred and four separate projects segregated by project category. This slide illustrates the significant efforts of the city to leverage outside sources of funding, which has yielded tremendous results in recent years. City funding contributes roughly thirty-six percent of the total CIP funding, with outside sources such as federal and state grants, Riverside County's Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, or TUMF, the Measure A program, as well as other specific funding sources make up the remaining sixty-four percent of the total CIP funding. The CIP includes the addition of twelve new projects this year, as well as many continuing projects. The new projects include a bike lane upgrades project, which will add bike lane legends and other upgrades to bike lanes throughout the city. This project is funded by a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant. The Bridge Maintenance Program provides funding for maintenance of our bridges throughout the city according to the inspections conducted by Caltrans on an annual basis. The I-15 Corridor Branding and Visioning Improvements includes funding for initial planning to implement a long-term master plan for improvements to the aesthetics of the I-15 corridor through Temecula. The Old Town Parklets Program is to add parklets in Old Town, and this is funded by the Community Reinvestment, or CIP program, excuse me, CRP program. The Pavement Management Program update is to update our pavement management program where we will be reviewing the condition and establishing the index and priorities for all of the streets throughout the city, and that will be used to establish the priorities for our future pavement management projects. A pedestrian ramp upgrade project is added to address sidewalk ramps throughout the city and our ADA transition plan. A project is added to construct a sidewalk on the north side of Third Street in Old Town. A storm drain pipe lining project is based on our soon-to-be-complete storm drain master plan, which will recommend improvements to storm drains throughout the city and address the aging pipes that we have within our system. Two new projects for traffic signal upgrades are added, and these will again be funded using the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funds. The Uptown Temecula Affordable Housing Site will be covered by Luke in just a few minutes, and the Vacant Parcel Cleanup and Beautification Project is another project that is added and funded through the CRP program. The circulation category contains twenty-three separate projects totaling five hundred and thirty-seven million dollars in project costs, and this is the largest category of projects. The I-15 French Valley Parkway Phase Two Project, one that we've been waiting for for a long time, is under construction and scheduled for completion in early two thousand and twenty-five. This project includes a fifty million dollar grant, the infra grant from the USDOT. The pavement rehabilitation projects is the continuation of our efforts to maintain the quality of the city's roadway system, one of our largest assets. We have over fourteen million dollars in pavement rehab projects planned over the next two years, including repaving of arterial roads and residential slurry seal projects. The Marietta Creek at Overland Drive project is currently in the final environmental and design phase, with construction anticipated to begin in two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. This project is funded through the State of California Highway Bridge Program. The Rainy Bull Canyon Road pavement rehabilitation project is currently being designed and planned for construction this fiscal year, with the majority of funding provided through the Pachanga Intergovernmental Agreement, and this funding is part of over forty million dollars in contributions from the Pachanga tribe since two thousand. The Diaz Road Expansion Project includes widening and improvement of Diaz Road between Rancho California Road and Winchester Road, followed by the final phase between Winchester Road and the northern city boundary. Diaz Road will be the northern extension of the western bypass. The I-15 Congestion Relief Auxiliary Lane Project includes the city-led project to construct an auxiliary lane for northbound I-15 between Temecula Parkway and Rancho California Road, and plans for this project were approved and bidding authorized by the city council at your meeting this past Tuesday. The project is anticipated to start construction in the fall of this year, followed by a larger fifty million dollar Caltrans project to construct auxiliary lanes between the other interchanges on both the northbound and southbound side of I-15 and Temecula, scheduled for construction in two thousand and twenty-five and twenty-six. There will also be an RCTC project to implement a smart freeway project on the I-15 corridor through Temecula, and this project will be starting later this year. A presentation will be made to the city council by RCTC on this project later as well. The Inez Road Phase One Project includes the widening of Inez Road between Tierra Vista or the Duck Pond entrance and Rancho Vista Road, and it includes funding provided by the Rancho Highlands Development Project currently under construction. A new roundabout is proposed at the intersection of Deportola and Jedediah Smith Roads, which includes the eight hundred thousand dollar federal grant funding from the Economic Development Initiative. Under the infrastructure category, there are fifty-six separate projects totaling one hundred and thirty-four million dollars in total costs. The Margarita Recreation Center, covered by Erica earlier, is the new intergenerational recreation center, which also includes a new pool complex. This project's currently under construction and anticipated to be complete in September of two thousand and twenty-three. The CRC renovation and expansion, Phase One of this project, which includes mostly maintenance-type items, will be complete later this summer, very soon now, followed by later phases, which include expansion of the existing facility. We're also planning to construct a new splash pad at the CRC Pool Complex, which will replace the kiddie pool, with construction scheduled to start in the fall of this year. The city facilities rehabilitation includes items for repair and rehabilitation of existing city facilities based on the citywide facility asset assessment, which was completed last year. A citywide sidewalk project includes annual replacement of damaged sidewalks and access ramps throughout the city, as well as new sidewalks and missing gaps from the citywide sidewalk inventory. The Bike Lane and Trail Program includes a new project to install multi-use trails in and around the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. The Comprehensive General Plan Update is currently underway and anticipated to be complete within the next two years. The Fire Station Eighty-Four and Seventy-Three interior improvements in additions includes plans for Fire Station Eighty-Four to complete and include a new fitness room, storage room, and kitchen improvements, and the Fire Station Seventy-Three improvements will be complete later in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. Funding has been received from Pachanga to augment Measure S funding to enhance the landscaping on the west side of I-15, Seventy-Nine South Interchange. The Mary Phillips Senior Center renovation project is currently under construction and includes exterior and interior renovations and modernization. We installed a new emergency generator at the Mary Phillips Senior Center using funding from a Cal OES grant, and will also be installing a lighted outdoor shuffleboard facility later this year. The Fiber Optic Master Plan and Fiber Optic Communications Project includes installation of fiber optic communications between traffic signals on Winchester Road, Rancho California Road, and Temecula Parkway corridors, and coordination of these traffic signals to improve circulation and traffic time on those corridors. Under the Parks and Recreation category, we have eighteen separate projects totaling over sixty-two million dollars in project costs. The Flood Control Channel Reconstruction and Repairs includes the recently-completed work at Friendship Park to prevent future erosion in the Temecula Creek Channel, and the next phase of this project will include the channel at the backside of Mike Nigar Park. The Uptown Temecula Sports Park includes funding to begin planning for the new multi-use sports park in the Marietta Creek Detention Basin property owned by the Riverside County Flood Control District and part of the overall Marietta Creek improvements. We expect this project will be the cornerstone of future development in the Uptown Temecula District. Playground Equipment Enhancement includes the continuation of an annual program of themed playgrounds, including four new parks this year and a Ronald Reagan Sports Park playground next year. The Harvesting Community Park Building is slated for renovation and expansion of the classrooms and also to bring this facility up to current ADA standards. Park Improvements includes the continuation of general park facilities replacement. The pickleball courts, which you heard about earlier, we have plans underway for construction of a seventeen-court pickleball facility, replacing the soccer field at the pit in the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. Staff is meeting with stakeholders to receive input on conceptual plans and anticipate starting construction on this project in two thousand and twenty-four. The roller hockey rink at Ronald Reagan Sports Park will be upgraded with a cover and new rink surfacing, and staff will be meeting with representatives of user groups over the next few months and anticipates the construction of this project in early two thousand and twenty-four. The existing skate park at Ronald Reagan Sports Park will be reconstructed with a new modern skate park facility. Staff will be meeting with project stakeholders over the next few months to receive input on the design concepts and plans for construction in two thousand and twenty-four. There's also a new dog park at the Mike Nigar Park, which will use Prop-68 grant funds, as well as be supplemented by Measure S funds. A new category has been included in the CIP this year, which provides for three projects that are funded with the combination of community facility district bonds and developer contributions. The Butterfield Stage Road Extension, which was completed between Marietta Hot Springs Road and Rancho California Road, was funded through the CFD funds provided by the Somers Bend Development Project. The Nicholas Road Extension and Improvements includes extending Nicholas Road between Cayega Resol and Butterfield Stage Road, and this is also starting construction now and funded by the Somers Bend CFD. And the Pachanga Parkway Environmental Mitigation, which took place in Temecula Creek, was funded through the Wolf Creek CFD. I'll now turn the presentation over to Deputy City Manager Luke Watson, who will discuss the city's affordable housing projects.
Thank you, Pat. The city of Temecula serves as the Housing Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, otherwise known as the Housing Successor, and is responsible for the investment of twelve point eight million in housing bond proceeds of the former RDA. Utilizing this dedicated funding source, the city council has approved funding agreements for two developments, which will provide an additional one hundred and thirty-seven affordable units. First, the Los Haciendas Development, located in Uptown Temecula-specific plan area, will provide seventy-seven multifamily affordable units. The project is currently under construction, and the city is providing progress payments to the developer utilizing the remaining housing bond proceeds. Second, the Vine Creek Development is located at the corner of Poo- Second, the Vine Creek Development is located at the corner of Poojole and Main Street and will provide sixty affordable units, fourteen of which will be set aside for residents with special needs. After the city's four-million-dollar Community Reinvestment Program funding allocation towards this project, the developer was successful in acquiring tax credit financing, and the project is now fully funded. Construction is actually currently underway and just began this week. In addition, the CIP includes a new project partnering with Habitat for Humanity on a third Habitat-led affordable development that will include six for-sale owner-occupied townhomes available to low-income families and individuals. The council approved the funding agreement between the city and Habitat for Humanity just this past Tuesday night. This project will give the city a relatively rare chance to add another affordable for-sale homeownership opportunity to the city's affordable housing inventory. Finally, the city recently utilized affordable housing bond funds to acquire a vacant site in the Uptown Temecula specific plan area. This site is now dedicated for the development of an affordable housing project. In addition to the property itself, the City Council allocated one million in Community Reinvestment Program funds, which are to be contributed directly to the project. Staff is currently preparing a request for proposals, which, upon release, will kick off a competitive process to select a development partner. While there are limited funding options available to cities for the construction of affordable and attainable housing, the city will continue to pursue every funding opportunity possible. Currently, the city is seeking corporate, nonprofit, and affordable housing development partners to come up with innovative ways to address the housing affordability needs of current and future residents. A number of conversations with potential development partners and community stakeholders are taking place. The city's twenty-plus-year effort to provide attainable housing options for all segments of the community has had past success with the funding and construction of seven-hundred-and-fifty-six affordable and attainable units. And with the addition of the Los Haciendas, Vine Creek, Habitat for Humanity Developments, and the future Uptown Temecula Project Site, the city will soon be able to offer approximately two-hundred-and-forty-three additional affordable and attainable units to the community. I'll now turn the presentation back over to the City Manager to discuss future planning items.
Thank you, Luke. As you've heard this morning, the city has much to be proud of and has a substantial list of programs and projects underway. While the budget concentrates mostly on the next fiscal year, we also keep an eye on the future and strategically plan for impacts to future budgets as well. As you're aware, the Fire Station in Old Town is a state-owned facility and runs both a state crew as well as a city crew from this station. The state informed the city a few years ago that they intend to relocate this station to wine country and have, in fact, purchased a future site for this new station. The city intends to purchase the existing Fire Station Twelve site and has been working with state officials to navigate this process. Financially, we established the fire facility acquisition fund, and we began setting aside funding two years ago. By the end of two thousand twenty-six, we will have seven-point-five million to utilize for this acquisition. We do not, however, have funding set aside of yet for the potential remodel of the facility or the backfill of staffing once the state crews move out of the station. I wanted to bring this up in today's discussion in order to begin strategically planning for these long-term impacts. Recently, the Temecula Valley Unified School District submitted a proposal to the city requesting an additional two school resource deputies be added to the existing five SRDs currently under contract. The district and the city have a longstanding cost-sharing arrangement for the SRDs whereby costs are split fifty-fifty. In my recent conversations with Dr. McClay this week, she is amenable and supportive of this staff request. Whether it's the addition of two, three, or six, I believe we need to have the conversation about cost sharing, and I will be seeking City Council direction. For context, it appears that there are twenty-two public schools within the Temecula city limits. This is excluding Tony Tobin Elementary, which is in Morgan Hill. The current five SRDs are dedicated to each of the Temecula high schools, while the others serve in a roving assignment amongst the other school sites. Each SRD costs one-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand per school year, anticipated for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. If the City Council would like to have this conversation today and provide staff direction, we can. And I have invited members of TVUSD to attend our workshop this morning. If the City Council would like to have this conversation at a later date in a joint-city-TVUSD subcommittee setting, that can also be arranged. Since Measure S became effective in April two thousand seventeen, we have accounted for its revenue and expenditures in a separate fund. From a technical accounting perspective, Measure S is a general fund revenue and is not required to be accounted for separately. Now that it has been six years since we started receiving Measure S, staff would like to explore different reporting options to better align the city's budget with our financial statements, which report Measure S as a general fund revenue. If the City Council agrees, we would recommend working with the Strategic Fiscal Service Ad-Hoc Subcommittee on this and review the various alternatives for reporting and messaging Measure S while maintaining full transparency. We welcome any City Council thoughts on this shift in messaging. The city has contracted with a consultant to update our user fee study for all development-related fees imposed by the community development, public works, sheriff, and fire departments. The study is complete and has identified the full cost of providing the various services to the community and how those costs compare to the current fee schedule. This is a very complex study that has taken several years to complete, and we would like to recommend that the Strategic Fiscal Services Ad-Hoc Subcommittee review the results of this study and formulate recommendations before it is brought back before the full City Council later this year. As you've heard throughout this present, presentation, the city remains blessed with an excellent workforce and is financially stable over the ensuing five-year period, with reserves fully intact, structurally balanced, with revenues exceeding expenditure projections, and a robust capital improvement program that is seventy-four percent funded. While our local economy is indicating a flattening out over the next several months, we have conservatively budgeted our revenues to reflect this trend. City staff will continue to monitor revenues and will bring counsel and update if adjustments are deemed necessary. Special thanks go to the entire executive staff, department budget analysts, and our finance budget team, including our director Jennifer Hennessy, finance manager Paula Majors, senior accounting technician Catlin Dorsett, all of whom are foundational to our ability to build greatness while maintaining excellence in all we do. And an extra special shout-out to our media services team of Jonathan Hall and Chris Dreher, who have taken our presentation today to the next level with the addition of videos, drone footage, and top-notch graphics. This concludes our presentation this morning, and we are available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I always feel like every year at this presentation, we should just all stand up and then full-on ovation because it's quite wonderful. Before we move to public comments, are there any questions from my council colleagues of staff? Okay. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Oh, wow. That's exciting. Okay, we'll move on to...
There's one over here.
All right. If you'd like to bring it up and hand it to the Deputy City Clerk, and then we'll get you at the podium. You can go around the front if you want.
Thank you.
Okay, will you call the speaker, please?
Yes, the speaker's Tiffany Richter.
Yes. Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. That was a great presentation. I'm here today to talk about just a little thing in your presentation, and that's the pickleball courts. And so, we appreciate that you've put the three-point-three million in. I know that's probably more than you anticipated. I've got some of my pickleball people here to support us today. I just wanna, I think I'm gonna talk about the intangibles of adding that maybe sooner rather than two thousand twenty-four. In this world of maybe D E I, pickleball fits that completely. It doesn't matter what your economic standing is, what your race, what your gender, your ages. When you walk down to the four courts that we have, anybody can play. And so, it fits those boxes, but I would say pickleball goes above that. And again, it's just a little thing in your world, but we're just people down there. And I think that's what's missing in society. So, when you go, it doesn't, again, it doesn't matter. You're just a person. You don't fit a box. It's just your person. You go play. Sorry, I get emotional when I talk about it. And I think for me, that's why I'm obsessed with it, because it gets back to what I want this community to be, where we all just come together and, and we all have heartbeats. We're all just people. So, if it's, if you think that we could start this project before two thousand twenty-four, I think intangibly, you'll get a lot more out of it. John, do you have anything you want to add? So, that's all I want to say. Oh, in regards to the sheriffs, give them whatever they want. I'd like to see that number-one-one-thousand go down. If you need it for the school, it would just be great to stop some of this petty theft going on. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to council comments. Guess I could start down here. Councilmember Alexander, if you'd like to start? Yeah, this is general comments, and then we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Okay. Are we gonna be going specifically into Measure S and all that other stuff?
You can go into whatever you saw today, any, anything you saw today.
Are you gonna be asking any questions about that, or?
Certainly, you can ask questions, yeah.
Okay, so, let me start. First, I just want to say I agree exactly with what the lady just came up. I'm ecstatic. I love the fact that our fire, our police department, our fire department continue to be elevated. They continue to do their, their best, and we continue to give you guys funding because we want to make sure that both of your employees and deputies and everything else are taken care of. So, we just appreciate all you guys are doing. The drone, I think, is amazing. I know I spoke to one of your deputies on a ride-along, and I'm super excited to hear that that's, that's gonna be in the budget as well. As far as talking about, I guess, really with Measure S, I was just curious to find out, moving towards that, because that does go towards public safety and parks. And if we do move it into the general fund, and I guess I'm pushing this out to staff as a question, what else would this be used for that is not being used for currently? And also, was there a sunset date on the mixing into the general fund at any point in time?
No, there, there, there isn't a sunset date.
Okay.
Formalized or voter-approved, if that's the question related to Measure S. So, it's a, it's a revenue stream that is available to the city, the City Council, in perpetuity unless otherwise voted. You know, another initiative. As for, what was the first question?
So, if it moved...
What would it be used for?
Yeah, if it moves into the general fund, we saw what it's used for now. Is there anything else that would be, it would be used for differently if we do move it into the general fund?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take a stab at that, and Jen can jump in too. Just to be clear, Measure S, we, we, we talk about it as if it's like a different color of money. And we did that, you know, we've done that for seven years now because we just wanted to be very upfront and sort of tell everyone, and we, we went to great lengths to sort of message it that way. But in reality, technically, financially, it, it's a general fund revenue. And, and we don't separate out, separate those out typically. And so, the, the question is more of a messaging philosophical question to the City Council about, are you comfortable? Now, how we appropriate Measure S is set by council policy. So, every, you know, every year, this council sort of reviews a Measure S policy that sort of says, this is where, you know, we agree, this is where we want you to pledge forty million dollars. And that's what we've done for seven years. That's what we're doing this year. We're putting it into public safety. We're putting it into asset management. We're putting it into capital improvement programs. So, any changes around this concept, I would recommend, and I'm sure Jen will say this too, that, you know, we're gonna have to come back with a, a council policy that sort of reflects that change if indeed we're gonna move in that direction, so.
Yeah. The only thing I would add is that being a, a general fund revenue, just what that means is it's non-restricted so lo, so long as it is spent on anything that provides a public purpose. So, if it is blended in with the general fund, it'll go to supporting public works, community development, administration, anything that the general fund currently funds, which is, you know, more or less most of the operations of the city. It would just contribute to that revenue base.
Would it still be looked at as a separate color of money, as how you guys talk about it, or once it's blended, it's, it's blue or red? Like, that's it?
It would be blended, but it's, it's really up to council as per policy how you want to characterize it. It could still be a separate fund, and we could, rather than moving money into the general fund to cover public safety, we could charge public safety to the Measure S fund, and it could go a one-hundred percent towards public safety. It could, you know, so we're, you have a lot of flexibility on how you want to characterize those funds. But for all intents and purposes, from a technical perspective, it's just like sales tax. It's just like property tax. Just a regular general fund revenue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just to follow up, I don't want to, you know, dive too deep into it, but I think where Councilmember Alexander was going was, when Measure S was passed, it was passed on specific things, correct? And so, if it goes to the general fund, how do we ensure those specific things are still accounted for within the general fund?
No, it was, it was actually a general-purpose tax measure. It, it wasn't earmarked for specific things. Now, did we...
That's where the confusion comes from.
Yeah, but did we commit to sort of using Measure S in certain areas? Absolutely. And we are, we are holding true to that today, and the council policy reflects that.
Yeah, I think that's where the confusion come from, because I had the same question regarding moving that pot of money. So, with that said, the, the policy is gonna ensure that it's, it's used the way the council wants it to. And that's gonna set, so if it does move there, the policy is gonna ensure that maybe some of those things, the voters passed are still at the top, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, I'll just give you a real simple example here, like, it's, it's completely at the discretion of the City Council. If you saw on the slide, you know, Measure S is anticipated to bring in, call it forty million dollars this year. If the sheriff's contract is forty-two million, and you said, you know what, we want a hundred percent of Measure S going to law enforcement, it would, it would, it would cover all but two million dollars of law enforcement. If, if we decided, no, Measure S is gonna, fifty percent is, of that is going to law enforcement, and fifty percent is gonna go Cal Fire, and then you have the general fund sort of backfilling, because Measure S isn't gonna cover all of their contracts. You, you following me? So, it's, it's kind of a color of money that we're talking about here, and again, it's, it's, it's more... Yeah, it's unrestricted, so.
It's unrestricted. It's a color of money, and it just feels good to know that there's a pot of money, Measure S. And so, once it's in the general fund, it's gonna really go back to what the policy is, rather than, oh, let's use Measure S monies for this, if that makes sense. And so, semantics, but...
Yeah.
Councilmember Alexander, do you have any more questions? Okay. All right. Anything else, Councilmember Brown, right now?
Can I, can I ask Councilmember Alexander, do you have an opinion on, on this topic? I mean, do you, do you want to see it stay the status quo? Or are you open to messaging this differently, or?
I, I like it staying within, I kind of, what Jen was saying is basically, I would love for this to just go directly towards public safety and just have that transparency for the public, which I think a lot of them had that thought in mind, I think, when they were going through with this. But I think subcommittee would be perfectly capable of being able to, you know, run this out, figure it out, and then bring something back to the council. I think that would be a great place to go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone that, you know, sitting here today and watching the presentation, looking through the workshop materials, I found that last year the Governors, Government Finance Officers Association awarded the City of Temecula the Budget Presentation Award, and then also the Californian Society of Municipal Finance Officers awarded the City of Temecula with the Operating Budget Excellence Award. And I'm sure after today, you guys did submit for the award for twenty-three, twenty-four, and I think you'll be successful with that, with what we saw today, but thank you.
All right. Councilmember Kalfis?
First, I just want to commend...
First, I just wanted to commend the city and the staff for looking ahead and doing a five-year fiscal plan. I know a lot of cities, they usually only look 12 months out, maybe even some do too, but doing a five-year plan allows, just for that fiscal responsibility, and allows us to look forward with Cal Fire's new reduction in hours. We're going to have to add firefighters to that, so being able to look ahead. So, I commend the city and the staff, and even prior councils before I got on for essentially making it easy for us to look at these budgets, and they've already planned five years before I came on council. I also wanted to commend that 64% of our CIP funds come from outside funding, which is huge. That essentially means that 64% of the money that we are using for capital improvement programs aren't being taxpayer-funded by Temecula residents. That's from outside funding, so that is pretty amazing and impressive. I wanted to also thank the, our amazing partners of Pachanga. They've donated, or we received over $40 million from Pachanga since 1999, which has helped fund police officers, fire stations, millions of dollars into our CIP program. So, Pachanga has been a great partner for the city of Temecula. As far as the last little bullet point there with the future planning and TVUSD recommending the addition of two school resource officers, I have met with city manager, city staff, and our police chief. We have yet to bring it to council, but my suggestion has been, and I will push for, to have one school resource officer at every public school in Temecula. And then, with that being approximately $178,000 per school resource, school resource officer per year, it would be about $5 to $7 million added to our yearly budget. So, that is something that I am working on and I will be proposing and pushing hard for. And just to go along with the Measure S consolidation, I am for the Measure S consolidation, and I'm also for looking into doing, or looking at how we word it and giving either 75 to 100% of that to public safety. Because I know it was marketed with public safety. It wasn't a special tax, it was a general tax, but the way it was marketed was mostly for public safety. But we can also look at, when we bring it to, in front of council, look at the other items that were listed in 2016 when Measure S was passed to see how we want to essentially market it to, to our citizens. But again, I just want to commend the city for their fiscal responsibility, and thank you for making our job up here pretty easy.
Mayor Pro Tim Stewart?
Well, I've always told everybody, Temecula is the easiest place to be a city councilman for because a lot of the issues that a lot of cities have to deal with, such as debt, I mean, just the slide on our debt in Temecula was so impressive that people don't quite understand what that means, but it means a lot. Many, many, many cities are heavy into debt, and we're going to be debt-free in five years completely. We're debt-free facility-wise right now, but, so that was an impressive slide for sure. And so, thank you, city manager and staff for making that possible. So, pretty incredible. And community services, I mean, that 18 million that we spend on community services is probably the most valuable asset to create community. I mean, literally, it's, it's where everybody comes together. It's just like that lady was saying, you know, about pickleball. It's, you know, when, when people show up to the concert series, for instance, you know, no one's a political party. Nobody is, you know, whatever, whatever. They're there to enjoy a concert, and they're there to enjoy it with each other. So, very valuable. It's, it's really, as far as I'm concerned, one of the most valuable assets in the city is community services. And then, about the pickleball, we are moving really as fast as we can. We're trying to get it done as quick as we can. But if you've ever been involved in city or just government projects, it is like pushing a rock uphill. So, so we'll, we'll, we'll get it done absolutely as fast as we can. So, rest assured of that. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Stewart. Yeah, I would certainly echo some of the comments today. From a staff perspective, I think we have the best executive team and budget finance team in maybe the world. This does make our jobs very easy, but it's the, that guidance over the years of wanting to look ahead, wanting to be fiscally conservative, thinking, you know, not these sort of immediate gratification projects, but thinking that longer term, what does that look like? So, obviously, debt paydown strategy is just huge, I think, for our city. So, that's something we should be proud of. I also think that this presentation should be sort of mandatory. I think I've said this before, everyone in the city should have to watch this, like, take an hour out of your day and understand how the city works and, and how well it is actually run. Because we don't always hear that. Fire Station 12, you know, I'm glad we're setting money aside for that, and, you know, it's a little bit concerning, you know, adding six positions there. We're going to have to think about that, but I know we're planning for it. So, that's good. We definitely want to keep that, that station down here in Old Town. It's very important. We don't want to lose that. From a law enforcement perspective, the, the presentation is, is like what we've done over the last few years is pretty impressive, really highlighting the hard work that you and deputies and sergeants and lieutenants everyone's doing for, for the residents is pretty impressive. I'm excited to see, you know, what the next few years holds. I did a little bit of math. The ratio is, you know, the, the sort of standard practice we've held is 1,000 to 1, and it's really 930 residents. So, one deputy to about 930 residents currently, which is about nine, nine sworn officers over. That, that ratio would typically be what we've done in the past, and that's good. You know, we're solid. I feel healthy about that. The, the hour reduction, obviously, for Cal Fire is for mental and physical health is very important, and I think that is something that will, will pay dividends in the long run, even if we have to end up, you know, paying a little bit more in the long run with that. With school resource deputies, I think, you know, certainly, you know, adding two at this moment, I think, is something we need to pump the brakes on. And then, hearing Councilmember Kalfis maybe wanting to go sort of above and beyond that by, you know, 10 or 12, I think we should at least have the city TVSD subcommittee look at that. That way, we can talk with elected leadership at the school district as well as their staff, and then elected leadership here at the city as well as our staff. There, there is some confusion, and I, and I don't like mixing our pots of money too often because we'll, we'll have folks think that the city runs the school district at times, and I think the mixing of funds creates some confusion for residents. And, you know, we've been doing this for, I want to say, 10 or so years, maybe even longer than that. So, it's, it's been a pretty significant investment, but we know it's certainly worthwhile for, for our students and who are also obviously our residents, so that's important. But I think that belongs to the subcommittee at this point in time. As far as consolidating Measure S, certainly in support of that. You can hear today, there's some confusion, and I think we just kind of perpetuate that over the years when we keep talking about Measure S and it's a different pot of money. You know, it's not. It's a general fund, and, and I think if you just want to make it clean and simple, you just allocate the entire budget to public safety and say, this is where it goes, and you don't have to sort of worry about, well, what else is it paying for? It's all the same money. It's just, you know, maybe a little bit cleaner for folks, and we don't have to sort of debate the percentages of Major, Measure S being spent on certain things, public safety and the like. So, I think that would maybe help long-term with releasing some of that confusion that we, that we hear with respect to Measure S. And then, just the last bullet point, you have the user fee study. Certainly, I think that should go to subcommittee, and so, I think I've addressed all of the bullet points that you had up there for questions from, from council. Again, this is kind of like a great day in our city. I think that you all did a wonderful job, and staff that's in the audience appreciate all your hard work as well. This is certainly a team effort, and myself and a balance of the council is obviously very proud of the work that you all do and proud to call Temecula our home. So, with that, if there are no more questions or comments...
Mr. Mayor, can I add? Before you hit the gavel, can I, I'll just want to mention a couple of things that I heard and make sure I'm, I'm following the right direction here.
Yes, sir.
So, as far as outstanding action goes, it sounds like there's consensus from the council related to school resource deputies to convene a meeting of Temecula Valley Unified and the city of Temecula. It's a, it's a, it's a two-plus-two kind of noticed meeting, and we can discuss their, their current ask of SRDs. We can continue our conversations, you know, that'll go, go bigger than that, and then I would bring something back to the full council if that's amenable. Is that...
Yes.
Okay. And then, with respect to Measure S, we have a Strategic Fiscal Ad Hoc Subcommittee of the city council. Jennifer and I can put together some varied options, and it's, it's really messaging here, and we can bring it to that two-person subcommittee, and then that could be something that this council can, can chew on, and any changes to the status quo, obviously, would have to be reflected in a council policy that you guys would be presented with as well. User fee, we'll also tag that on to the Fiscal Services Ad Hoc and walk you through, again, some very complex numbers. And, and this, this conversation will be more about subsidy, and in terms of what we charge versus what we're subsidizing currently. So, that, that will be a lengthy conversation before we get ready for the full council. So, is everyone comfortable with that approach, too?
Aaron, can you just explain with those subcommittees and the action that may come from those subcommittees, does it impact this, this budget?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, what we heard, I didn't hear anything today necessarily that's going to change what we just presented to you, because we got to put a bow on this thing and turn it around in two weeks, three weeks, to you all to adopt June 12. However, if we, for example, if we meet with the school district and this becomes priority one, and then we will come back to the city council after July 1, and we would do a budget adjustment. And if it's the desire of them and this council to add SRDs, we'll have to do a budget adjustment, which will require us to come back. But we'll, we'll adopt everything, we'll ask you to adopt everything that you saw here today, and then probably some cleanup after July 1, if that makes sense.
It does. I just thank you for that application for everyone.
Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
I think, I think I got everything. Jen, you're good?
Okay.
We just want to thank you all for, and thank the team again, and appreciate the ongoing support. This is an unusual story. We're never going to take it for granted, and we're going to continue managing our resources in this manner. So, thanks. Thank you.
Anything else from my colleagues before we adjourn? All right. So, thanks, everybody, for joining us today. We will adjourn to our next regular meeting. Take care.